...earlier today, before our meeting begins formally, we will have an invocation offered by Commissioner Brady followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, we ask your blessings on the people who have called, who have been called to lead the community in which we live and work and play. Remind us that we are not only leaders but also servants, and that it is our responsibility to serve the common good of all. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen when it's time to listen patiently and receptively. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Mr. Cresser, would you pull the roll, please?
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Missus, you have before you the minutes of our meeting up to December 10, 2018. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move that we accept the December 10 meeting in dispense of the formal reading.
Second.
An emotion, second discussion. Without approval, the motion being approved, I'm sorry, without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objections, the motion is approved. We're going to have a presentation in just a moment, but I want to take a moment while you're all here, if you wait till the end of the meeting, and then you're going to be here anymore. You've all flunked. But I want to take a minute to wish you a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, after Conica, delayed, whatever it is that you're celebrating, and if you don't celebrate any of those, I hope you have time to spend with your families and your loved ones. It's a special week next week, and I hope you enjoy that. And I do want to also acknowledge some events. An event just earlier this afternoon, we are here at the tail end of the city's bicentennial, and it's been an extraordinary celebration. There have been other celebrations like it in the past for the city, but none better than this one. And we had so many people participate, staff members, the bicentennial commission, the schools, the Florence Regional Medical Center, Cedar Point, Vista, the commissioners, so many members of the public. It's been just a really extraordinary year, and we had a chance through a partnership with the Regis to also look back at what has come before us over these 200 years. And the things that we observed today when we had the groundbreaking, like, Street Pier is that the only constant throughout this entire period has been change. And if we, as a city, stand still, we will simply fall behind, because without change, you will only fall behind. You will not be adapting to modern circumstances, to the demands of citizens today, to the demands of our youth, who want to shape, want to shaping their community. And so, we went through a long process before we got to the groundbreaking today, and we had many important partners, many people around this table, Ms. Waddington in particular, Mr. Klein, Mr. Solway, the Law Department, Trevor, you were a big part of that as well, and of course, Mr. Wupser. It took a lot of effort and a lot of compromise and a lot of listening to get us to that point. But we are all so fortunate as a community that we were able to have that dialogue and get to a point where we had a project that not everyone agreed on, not everyone agreed with every aspect of it, but it was a consensus project, and we were able to move forward that way. We need to look no further to understand how fortunate we are this year, at this time in this community than to look at the logjam that is in DC and how bad politics can be. So I'm very fortunate for all of you, everyone at this table and everyone in this community. I want to wish you a great holiday season. And with that, we're going to turn to a presentation on behalf of the Recovery Institute of Ohio. Nate Kellmeyer and Jackie Van Scoeter are here to talk to us about your new effort. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I want to thank you for having me out here. When I was invited out here, I thought it was just going to be a few people, and I was going to be sitting at a table talking about the program. I didn't know it was going to be a room with a bunch of people, but I'm grateful to be standing here. So I am Nate Kellmeyer. I'm the CEO and co-founder of Recovery Institute of Ohio. Recovery Institute, let me tell you guys a little bit about myself. I'm 36 years old. I'm a 2000 graduate of Genoa High School. So I grew up not too far from here. I am in recovery. January, I'll be celebrating 11 years sober. Thank you. I've been working in clinical treatment for 10 years. I started working when I had nine months sober for a program down in Florida. I moved back to Ohio two years ago. I was a director at a program in Toledo, and I wanted to open up a program myself. And I wanted to open up a program where I could bring everything I've learned the last 10 years and put it into this program and do what I see has worked. And I chose Sandusky, because I know there's a need for it here in Sandusky, and Sandusky's still close to home for me. All my family's in Genoa. I can get to Genoa in 45 minutes, but I know that there was a need here. So I chose Sandusky because it sits halfway between Toledo and Cleveland also. What we do at Recovery Institute of Ohio is I have four levels of care. I have residential, I have partial hospitalization, I have intensive outpatient, and I have outpatient. I also have three residence houses where the clients that are going to be in our care can live in. Now, it's not mandatory for them to live in our houses, but it's highly suggested because it's a structured environment with staff 24/7. The three houses that we have are actually in Perkins Township. They're on 250, just south of Perkins Avenue. So they're not far from our clinical office. Our clinical office has eight offices in it, and it's on Pierce Street, 1019 Pierce Street, between Hayes and, I'm not sure the next crossroad, but it's not too far from Firelands Recovery Services. I have licensed clinicians who will be working with the clients in group therapy, individual therapy. But what I'm going to be doing with this program is I'm going to be bringing a lot of family therapy into it. Now, I have a lot of people in this community that I've gotten really good feedback, and I've had a lot of people ask me if they can be involved, and I love that. You know, I have Tandra on my side who's been helping me out greatly. She's been a blessing for me. She's introduced me to a lot of people that I need to meet, and I'm very blessed to have her, and I'm very blessed to have the good feedback I'm getting from the city. I was worried coming here to the city because I didn't know a whole lot of people. I'm very familiar with Ottawa County because I'm from Ottawa County. I know the commissioner's out there, and I work closely with the sheriff, I work closely with the dart officer out there. But I wanted to come to Erie County, and I wanted to come to Sandusky because I know the need for it here. I will be starting a family program. One of the things I'm going to be also doing, once I have a census and I have some people in my program, I'm going to be hiring a therapist who's going to be strictly nothing but for the family members of the people that are struggling. And I'm going to offer it as a free service for family members to come in and get their own therapy, because what I've learned over the last 10 years is that when the family gets educated on how to handle their loved ones, the loved ones start getting better. And that's what I want to focus on. But I'm very grateful to be here, and I want to see if anybody has any questions for me. I know I only have a few minutes, but I want to open it up because I know some people probably have some questions. And if you don't want to ask me right now, that's fine. I can leave some on my business cards, and I'd be more than happy if you guys want to come down and see the program and sit down with me and check out what we have to offer and meet some of my staff. I would love that. I love when I get visitors, and I love giving tours of our facility. I take a lot of pride in it, and our staff does, too. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just, I don't have a question, but I'm glad that you came today, and I think that it's the much-needed support and help for people who are affected by addiction, for the families and for those that are addicted in the community. You know, it's a long struggle because addiction affects people at all different ages, levels, income levels, and all sorts of places. And so, to have someone like this in the community is excellent.
Thank you. And again, thank you for being here. Ohio is ground zero in the addiction fight, and a lot of times it's hard to understand the dangers when you're at the front line of fighting that. It is a good thing that we see some signs out in that fight these days, some bad signs too, but I thank you for joining and putting your shoulder to the wheel and helping to make a difference.
Yeah, and if, like I said, I'll leave some cards. I don't know who I can leave them with, but I would love for anybody to, anybody has any questions, please do not hesitate to call me if you want to come out and see the facility. We are actually going to be doing an open house at the facility, open up for anybody to come, and it's going to be January 18 from 11 to 2 o'clock. We'll be doing a ribbon cutting at 1 o'clock, so if anybody's interested to come, please come out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address any of the items on our agenda, please step the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Commission staff, Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. Bear with me, I've got a little bit of a cold going on here. First question I have is item four on the regular agenda. It's the payment of almost $200,000 for furniture for the new city hall. My question would be, is there an inventory of furniture that we're taking from this location down to the new location, or are we just, you know, buying all brand new, first of all? The second item is item number five, which is the contract for $10,000 and change to Brady Sign Company. Just, I was going through the charter, and I found Charter section number 43, which is general disqualifications, and it says, "No member of the city commission shall directly or indirectly be interested in any contract, job, work, or service with the city of Sandusky." And maybe at the appropriate time, maybe the law director can perhaps address that issue, give an explanation of how we're getting around that part of the charter. The charter is our law, too, by the way, guys. Charter is the law of the city of Sandusky. Thank you.
Schwanger, anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Good afternoon. My name's James Snyder, President, Sandusky Firefighters, Local 327. I'd like to ask your support for item number seven tonight. That is the labor agreement between the firefighters' union and the city. Three years ago, we started negotiations with the former fire chief, and at that time, the union and the fire chief, we butted heads. To keep it G, we didn't get along with each other. So it made for a very rocky relationship, very rocky negotiations. Both the city and the union, we spent several thousand dollars on arbitrations and unions, so finally got the contract settled. Thank you, thanks to Captain Leshe, came in and helped save the day. So two years ago, I was elected president, and I came and talked to Justin and Trevor. I said, "Listen, we're going to be negotiating shortly. Let's do something different. Let's work together." Let's, Trevor and Justin agreed to try to do it in-house, not hire outside counsel, which saved the city tremendous amounts of money, and it also helped with relations between the firefighters and the city. So with the process, shortly after that contract, you guys made a decision, it was one of your best decisions I've seen you guys make, is to hire Chief Wilcox. He's been a phenomenal chief for us, and we worked hand in hand together. The relationship between the firefighters and the fire chief is amazing down there, best I've ever seen in my 23 years at the department down there. So I'd like to thank you for hiring him. So part of the process was the fire union met with the chief, hashed out some stuff that if we were to bring it in front of you guys, you guys probably wouldn't know what we were talking about, you know, firefighter lingo. So that made the process of sitting down with the city a whole lot easier because we'd had some things already worked out. Then we had sat down, met with Trevor on some language corrections and spelling changes and moving paragraphs. That was tremendous. And then we come time for negotiations, and we only had two sessions, which was phenomenal. I don't think there was one cuss word spoken, which is pretty good for us firefighters.
Did you slap one go, Trevor?
No, especially for me, too.
Yeah, so we worked very well. It was very smooth, a lot of dialogue back and forth, a lot of explaining from both sides, and it was very nice to come in and just sit down and not yell and scream, and to be able to get it done in two meetings. Us as the union, we feel that it's a very good, very fair contract, and I hope you guys on the city side also feel the same. I would like to take a quick second to thank, I had Matt Cox and John Strachan, they were in there with the negotiations, they did a great job, and as well as several other firefighters that did stuff behind the scenes. But I also had two superstars. They were Captain Lesch, he did our primary negotiations. He was phenomenal. He knows the contract by the back of his hand, and he was able to talk very well with Trevor and explain things, and it moved the process along. Took a lot of stress off myself. And our super superstar was Chris Bodel, Lieutenant Chris Bodel. He did all the typing, the rewording, the re-paragraphing. He just, I think he saved Trevor countless and countless numbers of hours putting the contract together, so I'd like to thank those two. But special thanks, I'd like to thank Trevor. He made the process go very, very smooth. City manager, I'd like to thank you. Hank, thank you also, you had some very good input. Chief Orzak and Chief Wilcox, thank you very much. And like I said, thank you, hopefully support number seven.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Catherine Carter, 5309 Columbus Avenue. This is just off the top of my head when you were talking about the budget for the new city hall. I was looking at the picture in Kelly's office the other day. I hope, your meetings, most of your meetings are not short. The last one was really lucky. Most of your meetings aren't that short. I hope you have more comfortable chairs for the public to sit in, and those white ones in that picture are not comfortable chairs. These are nice, but they're just not comfortable when you get two hours into a meeting, and it's important for everybody to be able to sit through a lot of what you guys discuss and enjoy the stuff that you, they learn from being here. I've learned a lot just coming to the meetings when I sometimes don't have anything to say. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Anyone else wishing to address the commission? If not, then we have several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation, but someone cared to make a motion to accept that.
So much.
Second discussion, without objection, the motion is approved. In hearing no objections, the motion is approved. Missus, we have a number of items on consent agenda. Are there any of those that we wish to have removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? If not, then, Mrs. Cresser, would you present the consent agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A on the consent agenda is the final budget numbers for calendar year 2018. Item B is authorization to fund the payroll stabilization fund. Item C are the temporary appropriations for the first quarter of 2019. Item D is an agreement with the Erie County Veterans Service Commission for the Sandusky Transit System. Item E is an agreement with Cedar Point for transportation services. Item F is a final change order for the Gartland Avenue project. It is a deduct only. And item G is a contract with Wade Trim for preparation of the annual consolidated plan.
Missus, having heard these communications and all these consent agenda items, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
I move that we accept the consent agenda with items A through G and declaring that all ordinances and resolutions as drafted and presented to the city commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions A through G, whether it be in accordance with section 13 or 14 of the city charter.
Second, an emotion, second discussion. Just two things I'd like to point out so they don't get lost. There is a contract that's very important over Cedar Point, for us to be able to provide transportation services to their employees next year. It's a $150,000 contract. Mr. Fratus highlighted that at our last meeting, so I thought it was okay to put that on the consent agenda. And the other item that I wanted to highlight is the payroll stabilization fund, pretty significant amounts, $375,000 that we're putting into that fund. That has been a very important practice that the commission has been observing, the city's been observing with Mr. Solway's assistance in coming up with it. We do have, as a public employer, we do have folks who retire from time to time with considerable payouts that are required. Sometimes we just get a bunch of people, and that's what we have to do, and that can disrupt the budget in unexpected ways. And so, having that stabilization fund has been a great initiative. Any other comments on the consent agenda? Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolutions, please.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolutions, please.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes. And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolutions, please.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes. And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances?
Yes.
Item number two, please.
Item number two is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with 300 Water Street Properties Limited, an affiliate of Hody Enterprises Incorporated, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Missus, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Missus, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second. An emotion, second discussion. Slasko, why don't you walk us through the project that is contemplated here and what is requested of the commission?
Yes, Mr. President, and I'll first acknowledge, this entity is somewhat affiliated with Hody Enterprises. John and Kula Hody both wanted to apologize for their not being here tonight. They're actually closing on this property as we speak today, so I wanted to pass that along on their behalf. So as mentioned, this property is affiliated with Hody Enterprises, but this is a ground floor condominium unit in the Lakeview condos property, which, as we know, there has been commercial uses on the ground floor of that property, so we do think this use is conducive. The company intends to move forward with purchasing the shell of a condominium for about $180,000, and they would look to invest upwards of $195,000 in physical improvements. The company intends to own the unit but lease to a financial services company which currently would be moving here into the city. Minimumly, per the proposed agreement, they'd be hiring initially five full-time employees with an annual minimum payroll of $500,000. And also, per the agreement, they would need to be completed with construction by the end of 2019 and make their five minimum full-time hires by mid-2020. So what is being proposed is a 10-year, 75% real estate tax abatement on the value of the improvements. They'll continue to pay the baseline taxes on that condominium unit. We did provide the Sandusky schools, as required, with a 14-day notification for questions or comments, of which we've received none to this date. So again, we'd be looking for a 10-year, 75% abatement on this particular condominium unit.
Thank you, Mr. Slasko. Commissioners, questions or comments? You know, there was a time when some developers did not want to do business with the city of Sandusky, and they found it too difficult, and the feedback that I've received in more recent years has been that we are a place that is open to doing business. If someone knocks on our door and says, "Can we do this?", the answer, sometimes perceived, right or wrong, was that the answer was no. And the answer with the amazing staff that we have today is, "Well, maybe not quite that way, but let me show you what you can do, and let me understand what you want to do, and let's figure out a way to get it done." And that's a total difference in attitude, and so we do welcome the development of very successful developers and Hodies to the community and hope that they engage in a lot of additional projects in the years to come. Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes. And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Item number three, please.
Item number three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with SNS Realty Limited, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Missus, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance, some of suspension of rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Slasko, again, could you walk us through what is being requested with this legislation?
Yes, Mr. President, and I will want to acknowledge the Sortinos are here in the audience in the event that they would like to have any comments once I get through the description. And I think their track record for development in the city stands for itself, and we're very appreciative that they look to further invest within our city. What's being proposed in terms of the project is a very similar building to the Holiday Inn Express that currently exists. This will be another five-story, 66-room project that will be sort of a phase-two expansion of the existing Holiday Inn Express that will be constructed on the east wing of the Quality Inn, which is currently being demolished. Per the agreement, this would be a total investment between 5.9 and 6.8 million, including furniture, fixtures, and equipment. There'd be a commitment to minimally 15 full-time employees and an annual payroll of $185,000. Also, per the agreement, the project would need to be completed no later than June of 2020, and the employees onboard by June 30 of 2021. Based on that, the city and staff is recommending a 10-year, 75% tax abatement. I will also mention, on the first phase of Holiday Inn Express, that was also a recipient of a 10-year, 75% tax abatement that is still ongoing. As, like we did with the last abatement, we provided the schools with 14-day notification, provided the schools with 14-day notification, of which we have no questions, comments, or concerns received from the schools either. So again, with that, we propose for a 10-year, 75% abatement on the value of the improvements to this facility, and we're very grateful for the proposed investment.
Thank you, Mr. Jalasko. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
Just like to say thank you. That's nice. See you're adding on there. I live down pretty close to that area, and it's nice to see you have more jobs to recommend.
He's having a little over there.
I sneak a coffee once in a while. Mr. Chairman, I have a follow-up question. Before we vote on that, I don't think we have to do, I don't know where the 14-day...
That's any, our revised code requires us to give notice.
It is still that's in fact now?
Yeah, that's all we have to do.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
But I mean, I don't know where that changed from years ago. We never did that.
So, yeah, that goes back, as I understand it, we adopted enterprise zone legislation when you were first on the commission, just before I came on the first time. And as a result of that, the revised code just says that we provide 14 days' notice, and as long as we do that, we are allowed to proceed. Mr. Hayburger, maybe you want to correct me or add on to that, please?
No, you're correct. But, and the triggering event is, as long as it's 10 years or 75%.
Gotcha, okay.
So if we did more than 10 years or more than 75%, then you do have to give...
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady?
You know, this tax abatement tool is just that, it's a tool, it's really, it's meant to encourage investment. And I've felt for a long time that it makes good sense to support people that are supporting us. And the Sortino family has been in this community for going on 70 years. They have been with us through thick and thin, and there's been more thin than there's been thick. And I think this is an opportunity for us to support them with this tax abatement. And I'm thrilled that they're doubling down on their investment on Cleveland Road and Coleswood Drive. That will be, that is, it will continue to be a terrific asset to the city.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yeah, I wanted to thank the Sortinos for coming here today and making the decision to invest again locally. It means a lot to me to have local businessmen invest in our community here. Plus, they're a couple of nice guys. He's a nice guy.
I think they're really nice guys. Additional questions or comments? Ms. Lloyd, as you know, it's tough business. And the two of you go back so long in this community, and you've made such outstanding contributions to the community. We are very grateful for your renewed investment in Sandusky. I know you're proud of Sandusky residents, and you're proud of Sandusky businessmen, but you're also just proud of Sanduskians. Your heart's here, and your businesses are here, and we just really appreciate that. So we want to echo the other thoughts about doubling down on this investment. I know you took a big risk with the first holiday, and I know from talking with you that that was, exceeded your expectations, and I hope this one exceeds your expectations, too. It's just a great project, and thank you for coming to the city. Anything else? Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Mr. Cresser, would you present item number four, please?
Yes, item number four is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with MCPC Imaging and Printing LLC, doing business as O Supplies for professional services for design, consultation, purchase, delivery, and installation of new office furniture for the City Hall Administrative Facility Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
I'll send you the two bucks for the cost.
Wonderful words.
Was it Waddington?
Commissioners, having heard item number four, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and second discussion. Jalasko, why don't you walk us through this project? You and I had a chance to talk earlier this week and went over some of the points that have been discussed earlier tonight. About half of the furniture that is going to be in the city hall is being brought over from this building, and the balance of it either doesn't, as you've explained to me, it doesn't fit. It's just past its useful life. And I think it was also particularly with respect to partitions, that that was, that those were just shot, and we needed some new furniture. By the way, the other thing that I thought was important to point out is addresses another one of the items that was discussed, is that about 25% of this bill goes for the common space, particularly the commission chambers and more comfortable chairs. So I want to highlight those couple of things, but if you could, go ahead and present that, please.
Yes, Mr. President. And this process dates back to February of this year, where the city put out an RFQ, many RFQs, one being for a furniture space designer and supplier. Based on those four submittals, we ranked them and selected O Supplies, MCPC, which we're happy to say is a local company out on Venice. And we have been through probably countless and exhaustive meetings with O Supplies, Stewart and myself, meeting with all the departments. And the first thing we did was take an inventory of every single file cabinet, credenza, desk, chair, guest chair, et cetera, that are within departments, with the idea that we want to move as much as reasonably possible, that makes sense based on condition, size, et cetera. But obviously, we knew that we were going to have to purchase some amount of new furniture, either because some stuff has passed its useful life, or stuff didn't fit in the space that we're moving into. So what we attached to the communication was sort of a list of goods provided by O Supplies that we have created over the last seven to eight months. And I think what's important is, this also does include the installation, delivery and installation of all the furniture. But as you mentioned, about 25% of the cost is to outfit the commission chambers, guest chairs, commission chairs, also all of our conference rooms. As we know, we're under conference roomed in this existing facility, so we needed to buy additional conference rooms, or excuse me, conference tables and chairs, and then significant amounts of guest chairs throughout the facility that we wanted to be consistent with the look of going into the new facility. Sort of the second large cost, another 33% of the cost, is for cubicle units for our building inspectors, co-inspectors, public work inspectors, and people that are in customer accounting, and a few other ancillary departments. And those are really critical because what we have here from a cubicle standpoint, I know, for example, in Public Works, it's a series of tables that are put together for the inspectors. Plus, we're moving into very space that needed to be customized in terms of the cubicles that we're putting into those spaces. So about 58% of the cost is cubicles and sort of those common area conference room spaces. So with that said, going through that exhaustive process and significantly negotiating with O Supplies, as we saw, the list price on this furniture was about $450,000, and we spent the last month or two just going through that list of goods and negotiating with O Supplies. So we feel very comfortable with what is on this list of goods. And again, we have put as top priority ensuring that we are moving as much as possible as opposed to buying new. So with that, I don't know if, Stewart, you had anything else to add? I know you've been in all the meetings, so with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Jalasko. Commissioners, questions or comments on the legislation?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
Just curious, with the old furniture that you will not be moving, will we be putting that into auction or the sale that we usually do, like every year?
Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Lloyd. Without question, anything else that we think has value, we would certainly be auctioning off, or seeing if any other departments or folks within the city could utilize it. But if not, we would look to auction it.
Other questions or comments?
What happens after auction? Trash? What happens if it doesn't sell at auction?
Mr. Chairman? I don't know if, I don't know if Eric has any thoughts for items that are not auctioned off or purchased at auction?
Through the Commission President to Commissioner Poole. I know that thought had come up. I remember having a discussion on it. I don't know legally what we'd have to do, so I'd have to look to Trevor to see. But if the Commission wanted us to consider making it available for community groups as opposed to selling, we could certainly consider that option, if, so long as we don't have a public process that we have to go through as far as donating property.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole?
My only interest is that we don't end up with a bunch of unusable furniture that you move out to someplace to store.
Yeah, I agree with that completely.
So we have to, it's got to go someplace.
Yeah.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, one last one. The only thing that caught my eye is that this is considered a special order, and it may not be returned. So just be sure that you got what you need, because this is a pretty big order, for stuff that can't, none of it can be returned. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Mr. Cresser, would you present item number five, please?
Yes, item five is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Brady Sign Company of Sandusky, Ohio, for the City Hall signage and wayfinding project, interior signage, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and second discussion. Let's start out, Mr. Hayburger, with your advice to the commission regarding the issue that was raised regarding Section 14 of the city charter. Certainly, every commissioner to a person would acknowledge that, of course, the charter is our governing document in the law of the city. But there's an interplay here with state law, and I'd like to understand what your advice is to us as to whether it is, whether we may permit, whether we may award that contract to Brady Sign.
Through you, Commission President. Historically, that section has been interpreted that as long as the process is competitively bid, that that section of the charter is complied with. And I believe Mr. Brady even went to Ohio Ethics Commission and may have an ethics opinion as to that as well. But historically, that's the way it's been, that section has been interpreted.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole?
I wish you'd provided that interpretation, because, yeah, I won't belabor this. It specifically says no member of the city commission. I understand, I don't hate, since you're the only one that's seen the interpretation, I just don't want to make a vote that I, that's inappropriate. And so I have to, I guess the only thing is yes or no. I'm going to vote no, because the general concept, this interpretation, interpreted by who? There's nothing before us to do this. I think these signs are six months, a year away. There's no reason we have to vote this today. So I'm going to make a motion that we table this indefinitely until we get some concrete proof that we're not doing something wrong. Mr. Brady has honestly come forward believing this to be true, and I don't have any problem with giving a contract to Brady Sign. But I'm not comfortable voting on something that's just, somebody just says, when it's clearly in conflict with what's written in the charter. The state law, the charter supersedes, as far as I understand, state law to a degree. And ethics considerations in the state law are general considerations for all officials. This provision specifically says no member of the city commission. It's very specific. So I'm not sure that the, I need to read the interpretation. So I made a motion that this be tabled indefinitely until we get the information.
Second.
Got a motion and second. Mr. Cresser, call the roll.
Mr. Brady?
Overstein.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
No.
Ms. Lloyd?
No.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Just tied, the motion doesn't pass.
Doesn't pass.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Lockhart.
Is it possible that we can get some kind of clarification on it so that we can move forward in a relatively soon timeframe? Perhaps somebody could...
Mr. Hayburger? Any additional thoughts on that? I take it in the past, there have been contracts that were awarded to companies that had a relationship with the commission as long as they had been competitively bid. Can you, can you lay out whether additional time would help you understand this better?
Through you, Commission President. There's nothing directly on point as to Mr. Brady or anything like that. I'm only going through conversations with previous law directors, so there's nothing that I'm aware of that I can bring. To my knowledge, I don't believe this has come up before. But I can just say through, it has at least been presented as an issue and has been interpreted that way. So I suppose I can go back and see if it has been done. But to my knowledge, off the top of my head, I don't believe there is an actual contract that's been let.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd?
As long as everything's been competitively bid, I'm comfortable in supporting this. And maybe we need to clean the language up in our charter looking forward, but I'm prepared to vote yes on this.
I will make the observation that the alternative costs the city $9,940 more. Although I'm not discussing with Mr. Brady, I know him well enough to know that his attitude on this one would have been, "I'm going to get that contract on as a matter of pride, no matter what, and no matter how much it costs me." Because I can tell you, if you come in half of what the next highest bid is, you're not making any money on that contract. So I'm comfortable voting on it because of Mr. Hayburger's interpretation and based upon that advice, and based upon the fact that this is in the best financial interest of the city. Period. Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, just one. The, as Mr. Hayburger indicated, he's going from what has been done in the past, and had this not been brought to my attention to read in specific, this probably would have gone through as usual. Violating the charter by mistake in the past isn't a precedent that we, that justifies doing it, doing it now. So, and yes, I'm sorry, it's, looks like it'll cost us another $9,000. If nothing else, the question of why is it, the last question I'll ask then would be, what's it, since we did not see the bids, we simply saw the numbers, why is it twice as much? What's the difference? It doesn't, if it was competitively bid, and there was $100, $200 difference, but these bids are 100% lower, the winning bid. And you didn't even present that, just so we can see what, what made up these bids. This is too irregular to accept as it is for me.
Mr. Jalasko, I will make the observation that whenever I have called you after the agenda has been published, and I had questions about various things, that you immediately responded with answers. And if I wanted to see any documents, you've always immediately forwarded whatever document I wish to review. And I want to commend you for making things available that way. But the particular question on the floor is whether or not they, whether or not, there's a difference in these bids because they aren't apples to apples. And what I'd like to hear from you is whether you or someone in your direction has been able to go through these bids and make sure that both bids include everything that we requested.
Yes, Mr. President, and I'll acknowledge the bid process was ran through Public Works, through Aaron's Department, through Megan Stuckey, who does a lot of bidding on behalf of the Department of Community Development. These bids were on the exact same set of specifications that came before this commission for permission to bid. So as to why the bids are slightly different in numbers, that would have to be a question raised to the bidders. But they were bidding on the exact same set of documents, specifications, materials, et cetera. So it's not uncommon for there to be sometimes drastic differences, particularly on smaller jobs where a company's got to mobilize from much farther away. But as to the specifics, as to why there's a $9,000 and some dollar difference, that's ultimately up to those that bid. But I can assure you that they were bidding on an apples-to-apples set of specifications that came before this commission a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you, Mr. Jalasko. Anything to add, Mr. Carter?
Yes, Mr. President, I guess what I would say is typically when we bid a project, what we do is, we don't necessarily go line by line, item by item, and ask why every contractor, every person bid everything that they did. But we will, to the letter of the spec and the drawings and everything else, hold the people that we, the company that we award the contract to, to exactly what that spec says. So if somebody came in low or high or wherever they came in, we're going to make sure that they follow that spec and don't ask for additional money if they didn't follow that spec.
Well, in this case, I hope you ring every last sign of them, and on the way out, ring them the next two.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady?
I know that I am, should be, or am prohibited from lobbying or speaking on this issue, but I am going to push that envelope out and speak on it anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I...
I am willing to...
It's probably not a good idea for you to do that.
I think it's not a good idea.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, we're all individual commissioners here, and if Mr. Brady wants to speak, it's his office that he speaks from. So I'd like to hear whatever he has to say.
Mr. Brady?
The offer that, that I'm about to make is, is to attempt to get my fellow commissioners out of an uncomfortable situation. And if my offer is to withdraw our bid and allow you to take the next, the next bid, the only other bid that you got for this project, and that offer is made only in the spirit of getting the rest of you commissioners off of an uncomfortable position that I don't think any of us anticipated being put into. I have shared with staff, and I've shared with our law director, the opinion that I received from the Ohio Ethics Commission, and that is why we have proceeded to bid on several signage projects within the city unsuccessfully until now. So I am more than willing to make the offer to withdraw our bid and allow the city to move forward with this project.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Waddington?
I'm comfortable going forward with this Brady bid and...
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine? And Ms. Lloyd?
I am as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
It is definitely not necessary for you to withdraw your, withdraw your bid. That's not the concern. The issue here is that, is that something's been brought to a question of whether or not we are, as a commission, following the law appropriately. Had the information been provided at the outset that we make decisions on, would not, this probably would never have come up. Mr. Brady, as you've indicated, is, is the Ethics Commission rulings that could have been shared. been shared. Likewise, the bids could have been shared. We could have seen what it is. The concept of I get, we get approximately 200 pages of information two days before the meeting. We vote on what we are presented. The concept of I have to go through every line and comma to find out stuff that I need to make the decisions and call you folks is unreasonable. Simple as that. Now, a simple, straightforward presentation, you make, the staff makes presentations to us on which we make bids, on which we vote on these things. If you don't present enough information, the fact that I don't catch this the first time through with 200 pages of stuff to read and have to ask it here is not my problem. Staff is responsible for presenting complete presentations for us to vote upon. I could just as easily say that you left things out purposely so that the whole thing I wouldn't find it, but no one's ever said that. But you folks seem to think that we're supposed to be, that we work for you. You guys make presentations to us. So I'm sorry, I, just as simply, this has nothing to do with, with you, Mr. Brady, and the questions people ask are legitimate questions, and since you've been sitting on the answers all this time, I don't feel bad that it came up here. Enough said, we can take the vote, and if you, if we do vote and pass it, I'm still gonna ask, I'm still gonna ask the Ethics Commission to make a ruling, because I'm not sure it's right because you haven't presented me any information other than just the city manager's lawyer says. It's like Johnny Cochran and O.J., it makes no sense. I don't have to accept it.
I have a great appreciation for Brady Sign Company. It is a local business. My only concern is, and I really wish Commissioner Brady, Brady had not spoken on it, but my only concern is the legality of what Mr. Trevor had mentioned about state law versus local legislation. So could you speak a little bit more about that?
Yes. Through you, Commission President, to Mr. Twine. If you're looking for me to present a case that says this is directly on point, that this article means X, that will not be able, I can't do that because it doesn't exist. So whether or not other commissions have awarded contracts to employees or other commissioners, I'm not aware, but I'm sure it's probably happened in the past. Was that before that Article 43 was passed or not? I don't know. I can just say that this kinda came up upon me too, so it wasn't like I was sitting on it. My understanding was that as long as it's competitively bid, it's fine, and that's, and that's what I've been going from it, and actually I assumed Mr. Brady had had previous contracts with the city. So, but directly, if you want me to, even if you tabled it, to come back and wait, and if you wanted me to provide you something directly on point, that's not gonna happen because it just doesn't, doesn't exist.
Mr. Heiburger, one of the things that you and I both know is that when it comes to interpreting any law, if there's a question, you go back to what the intent was. And there is no question in my mind, when I read Section 43 of the Charter, that it was designed to protect the public purse from commissioners who were engaged in self-dealing, and that it makes perfect sense to me that that would be interpreted in a way that says if you have the public bidding process, the competitive bidding process, that you do protect the public purse. And indeed, what is being perhaps suggested is that we would go in the opposite direction and damage the public purse for reasons that I don't fully understand. And I want to say something else, too. When it comes to going through this line by line and comma by comma, that's exactly what all of us were elected to do. There's no excuse for doing anything else. As soon as I get to pack it, when I have time, I go through it, and I can tell you, staff knows when I get to pack it, because they're getting peppered with emails about what does this mean, why is this here? I want to see this document that goes along with this, please, so that I can understand it better. So that's enough said. Mr. Lockhart, you had something to add?
Based upon the information that I've heard so far and what's been provided from Mr. Heiburger, his, he has clarity on ethics, the state ethics, but not clarity on this particular piece. I think that's what he said. And Mr. Brady's comment about potentially wanting to withdraw or withdrawing his contract based upon the appearance of what it could mean to the public, I'd like to see more clarity, if there is clarity somewhere, and maybe that's in the form of an opinion or something along those lines, because at this point, I would have to vote no, based upon Mr. Brady's comments and then, of course, the law director's comments. I, I for one prefer local business, and as I said, and I'll say many times, it's small business that keeps the backbone of America, you know, up straight and right, but we're in the business of the public, too. So, you know, we're in the business of the people. So at this point, I'd be voting no, unless there's a way that we could wait and get some clarity so that Mr. Brady can do business, which would be the fair thing to do. I mean, I'll make another motion just to see if it's, if it's there among us, that we table this until we get at least an opinion or something, which I think there somewhere could be an opinion for Mr. Brady to do business, if that's the right thing to do at all. So I'll make one more motion. I'll motion to table this until such time they can, the staff can show us some type of clarity on this issue for the public's interest.
That motion has already been defeated.
Can't do that.
I'll say this, Mr. Brady, no good deed goes unpunished. Mr. Cresser, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Brady?
Obey.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Obey.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
An ordinance passes on first reading. Mr. Cresser, item number seven, please.
Six.
Six.
Yeah. Item six is an ordinance ratifying, accepting, and approving a collective bargaining agreement between this, what?
This was supposed to be pulled.
Yeah.
Oh, I was, I thought that was a firefighter's. My bad. Oh, you said seven? Thank you.
You were like, unless we're long working.
Seven!
Yeah, I'll teach you math.
Ordinance ratifying, accepting, and approving a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Sandusky and Ohio Charter and International Corporation and the International Association of Firefighters Local 327, the collective bargaining unit for certain employees of the Sandusky Fire Department for the period January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2021, a copy of which is attached to this ordinance and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Mr. is having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance to Section 14 of the City Charter.
And a motion and second. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I'd just like to thank everyone involved for making this such a, a much more smoother process than last time, so thank you for coming together and working together and saving some dollars.
I want to particularly single out your professionalism, which has been sold both here at this meeting and in many other instances under the city. In both of our, in the safety departments of the city, we have extraordinary leaders and we've demonstrated the ability to work with the firefighters, who can be a contagious group of cans sometimes. And Mr. Snyder, I want to thank you for the union's effort in coming to a quick resolution, and I'm glad that we are on better footing and have a better relationship these days. It certainly is a lot better where we are today than a few years back. And Mr. Heiburger, I want to single him out as you did for, for his professionalism in moving this forward, and once again, being able to keep a lid on our outside living costs. I'm always sorry for my colleagues at the bar, but he's, he's done a good job of keeping down those costs, so additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to echo your comments as well as Commissioner Lloyd's. I've, I've never heard someone talks, speak so highly about a contract negotiations as was spoken out tonight for both sides of the table. So I just want to echo the appreciation and thanks for everyone involved in this. I hope all future contract negotiations can go as smoothly with our union, so again, very much appreciated.
Mr. Chairman.
Great.
There's, there's one really small point that I wanted to add, and I've been looking for a good spot to do it, this is as good as any. When, when we do cleanups and when we are out there in the, in the neighborhoods as oftentimes many of us are with Mr. Waddington, you look around and firefighters are with us. They show up, they send a truck, they send a couple of people, and they don't have to do that. It, it connects with the neighborhood, it connects with the citizens, it's about public relations, and you know what, it connects with the commissioners, too. When we go into these negotiations, we feel better about it because we feel like we're all on the same team. That goes for the firemen, that goes for the police department, and that goes for AskMe, too. There is not, a week goes by that in some fashion I don't connect with, say, our city electrical inspector or one of our electricians or a sewer and water person. So, you know, these negotiations, they have to take place, they have, they're built in to be somewhat adversarial, but I think that we're certainly on the right track with the team and the people we have doing it now, that we've reduced the heat on that adversarial issue a great deal, so credit, credit to everybody that's participated in all three of our unions. Thanks. It's good for our city.
Additional questions or comments? Anything to add, Chief?
Through you, sir. It was, it was very refreshing to sit at the table and watch how cordial everyone was at the time. Again, I can't say enough about Trevor. Trevor was excellent during negotiations. Same as the local representation, they were, they were equal, they were equally as impressive. It was, it was realistic. There were things that were, that were proposed that everyone were, you know, they kicked it around, and then they were very inclusive in terms of trying to figure that stuff out. And everyone at the table, including Chief Orzak, who gave us great reference to comparables in terms of police and fire, him being there was very important as well. And this, just to see it just kind of manifest and just open up, it's just, you know, in the future that these relations are just gonna grow, and hopefully that, you know, that they'll remain intact.
Great, well, thank you for your leadership again. Mr. Cresser, would you call the roll, call the roll and a motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. We turn now to Mr. Webster for his report.
Thank you, Commission President, Commission staff, and audience. I'll start with the donations. First, a donation from the Solaway family of $50 to the Parks and Recreation Fund to support youth recreational activities 2019. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
Second.
And a motion, second discussion. No objection, motion is approved, and hearing no objections, the motion is approved. One of the thanks to Hank and his family.
Also, we'd like to extend a heartfelt thank you to Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus for visiting the Cookie House in Washington Park every weekend this holiday season. Despite a world-class jam-packed schedule, they spent countless hours listening to the hopes and dreams of our local youth while making spirits bright. I don't think we need a motion for that one, but everyone I'm sure is feeling the, the spirit, so we'll move on to new and old business. I'm asking for reappointments of individuals to various committees. Each individual will serve a three-year term that will expire on December 31, 2021. I could read all of them and then have you, do I need an individual vote for each one? Or?
Or you can do a slate.
Unless, if anyone wants me to remove any individual names, I guess I can do that now or later, but otherwise I'll read, and then you guys can do them all. Paul Cook to the Economic Development Incentive Committee, John Fike to the Fire Prevention Code Board of Appeals, Roger Gunlock to the Residential Building Code Board of Appeals, John Leopold to the Residential Building Board Code of Appeals, Walt Matthews to the Housing Appeals Board, he's being appointed to full board member after previously serving as an alternate. Frank Vailli, reappointed to the Housing Appeals Board, and Janice Warner is being appointed to the Housing Appeals Board as an alternate. I'd ask for a motion to consider those.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion. Mr. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Those appointments are approved.
Great. Also, the police department, Officer Ankins and Officer DeSalle assisted OGO by helping the nonprofit erect their new walk-in cooler to store goods that they distribute throughout the community, and Sergeant Susanna and the community impact officers provided food for 12 families, four coats for children in need, and 250 dozen eggs for OGO and items for Project Happy, thanks to the anonymous donors that made this possible. For the fire department, Sandusky Fire will continue to work with OGO twice a month with their mobile food pantry. Moving on to finance, a final reminder for property owners of vacant dwellings. If your dwelling is expected to remain vacant and occupied during the winter months, we highly recommend that you contact our office to turn off the water. This will help prevent your water lines from freezing and breaking, which could lead to costly repairs for the property owner. The customer accounting office number is 419-627-5893. That's 419-627-5893. Also, water and sewer rates will increase with the January 2019 bill. Information regarding the annual rate increases through 2021 is available on the city's website. Also, for Public Works, we've received confirmation from Rob Glavinsky that his last scheduled day in the laboratory at the wastewater treatment plant will be on December 31 of this year. Robbie has helped operate the plant for over 25 years. His calm temperament and eye for details ensured compliance with EPA regulations while strengthening relationships in the lab and throughout the city's industrial community. We want to wish Mr. Glavinsky well in future endeavors. On a related note, congratulations to Richard Sinwald for promotion to laboratory compliance officer at the wastewater treatment plant, and to Paul Howard for his promotion into the lab. And just a reminder, that Jackson Pier will be under construction and closed to the public starting January 7 of next year. A public restroom will remain available throughout the project construction and Shoreline Drive, oh, sorry, throughout the project, and construction and Shoreline Drive will not begin until late spring. Also, the streets and traffic crews have successfully completed two rounds in each zone for the leaf collection program. They will drive through the city checking for additional leaves during the final week of December. Residents are reminded that they can still drop off bag leaves near Marquette, the Marquette Drive entrance to the service center, seven days a week until January 4. Moving on to community development, beginning in January of 2019, the City of Sandusky Code Compliance Division will begin hosting a biannual code compliance forum. The first code compliance forum will be held on January 22 at 4:00 p.m. in the commission chambers. Also, the purpose of the code compliance forum is to introduce the code compliance officers to the public and property owners, clarify their job duties in the code compliance process, and answer general questions about the housing nuisance and zoning codes. The second code compliance forum will be held on July 23 at 4:00 p.m., and all meetings are open to the public. Also, 1215 Mylan Road, the buyer has released all contingencies, including financing and inspection, and is moving towards closing. The property is anticipated to be transferred to Michelle Williams either the last week of December or the first week of January. Moving on to the planning department, before I begin, we have an intern with us tonight. Angie, do you want to introduce her?
Yes, this is Avery Cleary. She's from Miami firsty, and she'll be in the planning department through the end of January. Do you want to say hello?
I'm going to be here, I'm all majoring in planning and public administration, I'm a sophomore, but I'm graduating next year, and so it's really exciting to work in Sandusky and all this city has offered.
You don't know my daughter, Melanie, do you? It's a small girl.
I've heard so much about her, actually. Every time I say about the city of Sandusky, everyone tells me about her, but I haven't had the pleasure of being here myself yet.
Well, whatever ruckus and problems she's caused down there, they're probably all gone true. You've chosen a wonderful profession. I know she loves it, and I know she loves Miami also, and I'm glad that you're here. She's actually gonna be working over at Perkins, their planning department over the course of the, of the long winter break that you have in Miami, so welcome.
That's great, great, welcome. Also, the regular planning commission meeting is scheduled Wednesday, January 23 at 4:30 p.m. in the first floor conference room, and the regular board of zoning appeals meeting Commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, January 16 at 4:30 p.m. in the first floor conference room. And then I would just conclude my remarks for this evening. I think Dennis opened this meeting on a really powerful note about everything that's happening in Sandusky. I just was, texted a reminder at the beginning of the meeting by another staff member who isn't here tonight, who I think was reminded on Facebook, that it was our last meeting in December of 2015, three years ago, that we passed the bicentennial vision plan, and I think it's pretty exciting that today, on the last meeting of the year, three years later in our bicentennial, we broke ground on the Jackson Street Pier project, was identified in that plan, and also announced the construction of the Bowling Green Project, which was another project that was identified in that plan as well. So, the bicentennial vision plan is doing really well. And again, a huge thank you to all the community partner staff and the city commission that has made all of that possible. Hopefully, we'll be able to continue that momentum in 2019. And with that, I conclude my remarks for this evening.
Cresser, questions or comments? Mr. Cresser? Getting all face, did you, right? Okay.
It's holidays.
The items of old business. Items of new business. I have, Mr. Cresser, we have all received, Mr. Heyburger and Mr. Cresser, I need you to pay, help me with this, make sure I've got this right. We've all received an email with a series of folks who serve on existing boards and commissions and who, Mr. Cresser, check with, and may wish to continue serving, and each of these instances, they have indicated, as I understand it, that they wish to continue serving. And some of these, if I'm understanding this memo right, I, as the commission chair, can make the appointments outright, and they don't require a vote by the commission. I want to make sure I've got that right.
Yes.
Okay, and then the others, we do need to appoint as a commission. So, then with, with that in mind, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to appoint to the Audit Finance Committee Dan Moncher, and I'm going to appoint Steve Tomasula, who is new. He is employed in the accounting department. To your point, Dave Hoffman, who has long been a member, he's also employed in the accounting department, to your point, long been a member of that commission, has found that his travel schedule is too significant, and the council's ended today in meetings, so Mr. Tomasula has stepped forward in his place, so I'm making those two appointments. To the Civil Services Commission, I'm reappointing Fitz Rhodes. To the CRA Housing Council, I'm reappointing Rick Jeffrey and Hank Soloway. I'll need to get to another appointment that needs to be made by the city commission up to that, to that council. And then finally, to the tree commission, I'm reappointing Jim Arthur. And as to the balance of the terms that are expiring, I wonder if someone might care to make a motion to reappoint Walt Matthews to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Some move.
Second.
An emotion and second discussion. No objection, motion be approved, and hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Gina Deppert, who is the Trady of Sandusky City Schools, is presently serving on the CRA Housing Council, and is interested in serving if there's one of the commissioners who wishes to appoint her, reappoint her to that council.
Some move.
Second.
An emotion and second discussion. No objection, motion be approved, hearing no objection, the motion is approved. It indicates in this memorandum that there are two members appointed by the city commissioners. Do we need another member still to that council? Can we short one?
No.
Okay, I, I want to make sure I had that right, then. To the Erie Regional Planning Commissioner, there are two members whose terms are expiring, wish to continue serving, those would be Dave Miller and John Panzer. Does someone care to make a motion to reappoint them?
Some move.
Second.
An emotion and second discussion. No objection, motion be approved, hearing no objection, the motion is approved. To the Landmark Commission, the terms of Timothy Berkey and Joe Golea are expiring. Does someone care to make a motion to appoint those individuals to the Landmark Commission?
Some move.
Second.
An emotion and second discussion. I'm going to call the roll on that one because of my relationship with Joe Golea. Mr. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Obstein.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Those appointments are made. To the Oakland Cemetery Board, the terms of Steve Toth, Linda O'Malley, Aaron Smith are expiring. Would someone care to make a motion to reappoint those individuals?
Some move.
Second.
An emotion and second discussion. No objection, motion be approved, hearing no objection, the motion is approved. To the Planning Commission, the terms of Connor Wieland and Joe Golea are expiring. Would someone care to make a motion to reappoint those individuals?
Some move.
Second.
An emotion and second discussion. For the same reasons, Mr. Cresser, would you call the roll on that motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Obstein.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Those appointments are made. To the Public Arts and Culture Commission, the term of Jordan Sternberg is expiring. Would someone care to make a motion to reappoint Mr. Sternberg?
Some move.
Second.
An emotion and second discussion. No objection, motion be approved, hearing no objection, the motion is approved. To the Recreation Board, the terms are expiring of Larry Wren, Tom McKenna, Tom Sarah, and Sean Coakley, all of whom wish to continue serving. Someone, would someone care to make a motion to reappoint those individuals?
Some move.
Second.
An emotion and second discussion. No objection, motion be approved, hearing no objection, the motion is approved. That was a lot easier than we did it last year. Other items of new business. Then we turn now to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the commission? Please step to the microphone, give us your name, address, and share us.
20362 Sheffield Way. I didn't get a chance to look at the firefighter contract. Excuse me, did we, did we get additional firefighters finally through that contract? Mr. Mayor, do you know?
The contract does not address staffing.
It did not address staffing, okay. Also, it looks like on the Brady signage issue, you guys have two weeks to get some kind of a, whatever opinion Mr. Brady got back from the ethics, you guys have two weeks to...
That's his letter from the Ohio Ethics Commission, not something that the public has a right to necessarily review. It's up to him to be questioned.
Okay, well, and it's up to you guys to ask him for that, not, it's not up to me. With the, what, what's the plan now to pay for Shoreline Drive, since the funding from the state did not get passed, or not able to apply for that, that, that funding? Is there, is there a contingency plan now that's been set into place, pay for that Shoreline Drive project?
You're talking about the water and sewer loans?
Yes, correct.
My understanding is staff has continued to work on that.
Okay. And, in, in the meantime, construction starts soon, or are we doing Jackson Street Pier first, and then doing Shoreline Drive, is that?
The, the schedule, which has been announced, has been, Jackson Street Pier will start sometime after, very shortly after the new year.
Correct.
And it's my understanding that the, and the Shoreline, we, so, and then last I heard, Shoreline late spring.
Okay, so that'll give you some time to get your funding, funding mechanism finalized.
I believe that is what the thought is.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
James Snyder, Sandusky Fire Fighters President. I'd like to say, say thank you for the support, and as I sat down earlier, I realized I made a major sin, forgot to acknowledge Connie and Victoria. They did a tremendous job, and pass along some advice, you want to keep human researchers on your side, you don't want to make them upset, so please pass that on to Connie and Victoria, that, thank you, they did a great job.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm here, I'm entertaining a motion to adjourn.
So, next year.